I think we're ready to get started. Right. Want to start out tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance? Commissioner Smith, would you mind leading us in that?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, could you officially call the meeting to order before we do that?
Call the meeting to order for this regular planning commission meeting. Just a note, for those who weren't here earlier, we've got several new commissioner, our commission members here tonight, and they were sworn in earlier, so go easy on us. And with that, we'll have a roll call.
Chair Anderson is absent. Chair Bloomfield?
Here.
Cavaney?
Here.
Noah Munt?
Here.
Scott September?
Here.
Jan Simon?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Phil Alabrandi?
Here.
And Nathan Mackin.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
All right, with that, we'll have, we reviewed the agenda earlier. Commissioner Cavaney? You approve the agenda?
Yep, move to approve the agenda as scheduled.
Anybody second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Not sure that we needed to do that, but it sounded good anyway. We're just getting warmed up. All right. "At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The commission board response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda." Are there any, are there anything, any items that need to be brought before the commission that is not on the agenda? None. We'll move on to item number 12. "Report from Council liaison on current events." Councilmember Peterson, welcome.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, and welcome to our new planning commissioners. Commissioner Jan Simon, Commissioner Phil Alabrandi, Commissioner Scott September, Commissioner Noah Munt, and Commissioner Noah Mackin. Welcome them to our planning commission and look forward to working with them over the next several years as they fill their terms here with us in the town of Gilbert. Always appreciate people stepping up to apply to be part of our boards and commissions. Some of the news that I have for you tonight, if you didn't see breaking news this past week, was that Deloitte is doubling down in Gilbert and building another 100,000-square-foot expansion in the Commons at Rivian Lawn, which is great news for all of us here. And to have that company to come to Gilbert last December and to already be making the decision to double down here and to build that expansion is just wonderful for all of us. On September 21st, we opened Phase 1A of the Gilbert Regional Park. If you haven't had an opportunity to go down there yet, it is amazing. If you have little kids, well, I even enjoyed it. Big kids, the splash pad has 57 interactive activities on it, so please get your family down there to enjoy that. Phase 1B is expected to open the summer of 2020, and will include a seven-acre lake, a performance pavilion/ amphitheater, a 10-acre event lawn, 16 pickleball courts, I hear pickleball's very hot right now, six tennis courts, two basketball courts, and six sand volleyball courts. The month of October is domestic violence awareness. And on Wednesdays in the town, we wear purple to signify our support of anybody that's involved in domestic violence. We have a special team here in the police department that works very specifically on these cases. On October 24th, you will see that that's Domestic Violence Awareness Day, and the Gilbert Water Tower will be lit from October 24th until October 26th to support that cause here in the town of Gilbert. Residents of Gilbert will notice they'll be getting ballots in the mail. I just want to make them aware that there are ballots coming out from all three of the school districts that are here in Gilbert, Higley, Gilbert Public Schools, and Chandler Public Schools. Please participate in that election. It's very important for your school districts to make sure that your vote gets counted for their issues. And I look forward to hearing the cases this evening. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Okay. Moving on to the public hearing for consent items, items on a consent agenda. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission and board may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item to be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission board will, shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of the public discussion separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The items on the public hearing consent calendar tonight are items number 13, S-18-19 Cadiz for the Pre-Platton Open Space Plan. Item number 14, DR-19-81 Vidura Santan Village Apartments for a site plan. Item number 15, DR-19-82 The Aces of Gilbert Campus. Item number 16, DR-19-98 and DR-18-186A Valvista and Queen Creek Retail. And then we have three that are all together, items number 17, 18, and 19, UP-19-40, UP-19-41, and DR-19-119, and they're all regarding power ray and storage. It's an indoor storage site, and those will all be continued to the December 4th hearing. Item number 20, UP-19-36 Mercy Macro for a conditional use permit. And item number 21, DR-19-104 Office Warehouse Building Lots 43 and 44 for a site plan. And that is our consent agenda. Are there any, are there any items that we need to take off the agenda? Don't think so. Right. Commissioner Cavaney?
Okay, Vice Chairman Bloomfield, I move to approve on consent the following agenda, the following cases. Item 13, S-18-19, item 14, DR-19-81, item 15, DR-19-82, item 16, DR-19-98, item 20, UP-19-36, and item 21, DR-19-104.
Okay.
Second?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, could you open and close the public hearing on those items?
Sure. I'd like to open, open all these cases for public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? None, we will close the public hearing. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Right. We have us been motioned by Commissioner Cavaney and seconded by Commissioner Alabrandi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on. Public hearing non-consent. The public, the non-consent public hearing items are heard as an individual public hearing and will be acted on by the commission board in a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission and board. Up tonight, we have item number 22. It's case number DR-19-83 Springs at Cooley Station. We'll have a presentation by Sydney Bethel.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the commission. The subject site is approximately 15.27 gross acres, and it's located east of the northeast corner of Ruckert and Williamsfield Road. It was recently rezoned from Gateway Village Center to multifamily medium with a PAD overlay at the September 19th Town Council hearing. The request before each night is a design review application to build a multifamily development that's approximately 276, that has approximately 276 units with a density of 18 dwelling units an acre. To provide some location context, this is located within the Gateway, the Gateway District. So we have a couple different character areas within the town of Gilbert, and this is one of them. It's specifically located within the school, Cooley Station area in the Village Center. So this is supposed to be the core of the Gateway Character Area, and is supposed to be more pedestrian-oriented, have a higher density in both commercial and multifamily housing, and has been a vision of the town for the past 20 years. There has been some slow working development throughout the area in these 20 years, including some improvements that were done in the mid-2000s, along with a lot of developments that you've seen recently, especially Verdi at Cooley Station and some other developments in the past couple of years that have been popping up. So it's been a slow-moving process, but the vision is still there, it just has been modified over time. Moving on to the site plan, there are 10 proposed residential buildings ranging from two to three stories. All of the proposed two-story buildings are located here along Haskell Street. The three stories are located along Williamsfield Road and also internal to the site. There is one amenity building, along with a pool located in the center of the site. There are three access points proposed, the first being off of Williamsfield Road, so this is going to be the main point of entry and exit for the site. There are also two points of access proposed on Haskell. The access point located over here is an emergency access only that is required by fire, so that will not be allowed to be used by the residents. It is a fire access only. And then here is a secondary access provided for the site onto Haskell. Haskell is currently a half-street that has only been completed on the north side when the Fincher Fields development came in. With this development, the applicant will be required to complete the other half-street of Haskell, so this is going to be 30 feet of right-of-way with some on-street parking. All of the parking for the site is located internal. There is a combination of carports, open parking, and parking garages. The parking garages are one-story, and they're located throughout the site. Here's an example of one over here. They are the slightly hatched buildings. For amenities for the residents, they have proposed a dog park and also utilized a, the retention basin is also an active amenity area, along with the pool and the amenity center that I referenced earlier. As you can see, some of the buildings here are pulled close to the street. This was something that was requested of staff per the design guidelines from the general plan for this area, so they are a little closer to the street, and they requested deviated setbacks during their planned area development approval that happened last month in September. So they're pulled closer to the street and interact with the street front. This is in order to allow a more pedestrian-oriented area, which is how this area was originally intended, even though it has been modified over the years. Moving on to colors and materials, there is a range of earth tones that are being utilized for the buildings in two different schemes. They also are utilizing a red brick and a wood trim. Red brick, specifically fuego red brick, is utilized throughout the Cooley Station area. This is one that's a little bit more muted that was selected to complement the building design. So there's two different color schemes, and there's also two-story and three-story buildings. So this is the two-story building. Again, this is going to be located to the north off of Haskell, and this is Scheme A, so they all utilize the same types of materials, but they are utilized in different ways, along with different colors, as we go through these different building types. This is Scheme B of the two-story buildings, so it's a little bit lighter and has a mix of those materials as I discussed. This is moving on to the three-story buildings, so these will be facing Williamsfield Road and also located internal to the site. And then moving to the second Scheme B for the three-story buildings here. And then here is the clubhouse. As you can see, it's a little different than the proposed residential building, so it provides a little bit of a unique aspect. And there are two modified conditions that are being requested with this approval. So staff is recommending approval of DR-19-83 with two modified conditions, the first being Condition Number Four, to change prior to construction document submittal to approval. And then Condition Number Six, an additional segment was added by development engineering to provide some clarification into their requested elements with the construction document submittal. So both of these were modifications that were modified for clarification. And I am here for further questions, and the applicant is also here for questions that I cannot answer.
Thank you, Sydney. Appreciate that. Are there any questions of, please, Commissioner Alabrandi?
Evening, Sydney, how are you?
Good, how are you, Commissioner?
Good. Question for you, there is an implied development here with all this significant multifamily housing going in along the strip, and that would be in the elementary schools in the area. That's the Higley Traditional Academy home, home area. The question I have for you is this, and I've been away from this for a couple of years. How well is it your responsibility to tie into the Higley District, or is it the developer to say, you know, here's the projected number of, you know, units, and there is a ratio that they've used for number of kids per, per house, per dwelling unit? So how does that all work?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Alabrandi, so during the rezoning process, the school district that, when there's a proposal for residential that it's located around is notified, so in this case, Higley was during the rezoning process, so the applicant has been working with the Higley School District, and they do do an analysis and do work with the school district in order to assess if they are able to take the number of students. So I'm not too familiar with the detail and what goes into the analysis, but it is something that the applicant has been working with the Higley School District, and staff facilitates it in the beginning, so we are aware that it is happening, we just don't know the details.
Be interesting to see if we close the loop on that with the current lack of funding for the school facilities, brought by the legislature, and the lead time to build new schools. I know Higley's not at capacity yet, but it'd be interesting to see when they max out, and we're going to need another building. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Alabrandi. Any other comments regarding the design review on this case? Or Cavaney?
So, Sydney, just out of curiosity, help me understand, did this, do you know if the town guided the developer on the location of the ingress egress points to this development? I see that we've got a couple of driveways off Haskell and one off of Williamsfield, and none off of the East and West. Just wondering if they were given guidance, or is that just their engineer that's made those determinations, and we know their thinking behind that?
Commissioner Cavaney, so this was modified from the original submittal, not too greatly, but this was requested based off of traffic engineering and fire, this configuration. So, for example, there is a possibility for a shared access right here. There's a multifamily zoning district over here, so it's not developed, but there may be an access from here eventually, so they do have to have a separation from that point for traffic, so that's why that's a little further over. Up here along Haskell, so all commercial and industrial developments are required to have two points of access per fire code, so that's why there is the second point of access off of Haskell. It could have possibly gone in the front here, but then we run into that issue with the separation requirements. And the secondary access was something that was required by fire. It has to do with the number of units in each segment. So per the number of dwelling units in each segment, there is a certain number of access points that are required by fire, so that's where these access points came from, and their configuration were originally proposed by the applicant and have been reconfigured based off of input from staff and our different codes.
Okay. So they're, they're designed by the applicant, supported by the engineer, town engineer, and are constrained by separation requirements on Williamsfield and fire requirements to have as many as they have? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? Somebody feel like they need to hear from the applicant at this point? Okay, I think we're all okay. We're gonna, we do have people who want to speak, and so I think what we'll do is we'll just go ahead and have members of the public who are here to speak, let them have the chance to do so, and then we may have further questions and comments. Okay. We have a Stephen Potter. Potter, he says he is opposed to this item, wishes to speak. Would like to welcome Stephen Potter up. Oh, I do not wish to speak. I'm so sorry. I mistook that. So he is opposed, and his comment is that we were promised two-story only, and we have some three-story going on in this development, so we might want to address that. We do have Josh Jeter, who says he wishes to speak. Josh? Please state your name and city of, city of origin, and then, yeah.
Thanks for letting me speak in front of you guys. I'm Josh Jeter, I'm the president of the HOA from the subdivision directly north of that. Me and my wife both, I'll try to keep it under three minutes, but me and my wife both spoke at the original vote, like 13 days ago. She couldn't be here tonight, but. So an article came out in the Gilbert Sun News just yesterday, and there were some quotes from, from the meeting that was about, about this vote. Councilman Scott Anderson said that he wanted to underscore the council's approval was not an end-all to the process, especially to the design issues that was raised by the residents. Councilman Jared Taylor also said that he supported a request, given there was opportunity for dialogue and to adjust the project accordingly. Mayor Jen Daniels also made comments that aren't quoted in the article, but talked about, you know, a fence, et cetera, and working with the residents directly north of it. And I think Sydney Bethel, I think she just was the one who spoke, but she was quoted as saying, said putting a fence back in is possible during the design review process, which I guess this is, you know, what that forum is today. So I got an email the other night, like 3:00 AM, from Greg Davis, one of the developers, and I'm just going to read some of that and kind of, I'll try to get through this as quick as possible, but. So he said, essentially this project site, plan, and flow has been redesigned at a core level to accommodate the town requirement for no fences. In order to add gates and fences back in, as is their typical design, because that's, I guess, Gilbert code, right? We would have to go back and substantially redesign the process, the project, which I don't understand that, because that vote was just, what, 10 days ago, or from the email, it was just 10 days prior to that. It also said, being this far down the road and being this vested into the design, design path that we've been directed to follow, that's not feasible. Even if it was, we would not have the town support, and would yet again be firmly directed to eliminate the gates and fences, which, per those quotes, that's not accurate, not according to the town council and the mayor in their quotes in that newspaper article. He said, we know it's not the answer that you wanted to hear. We did go back and explore options, but longstanding planning and design policy set this in motion a long time ago, which I don't understand that either, because that vote was just 10 days ago, so I don't know how those plans could have been in motion and solidified this quickly. So either, at best, they've been disingenuous, as my wife spoke in her speech a couple weeks ago to us, and at worst, they just completely lied to us. Another issue on that is that they talk about our project is part of a large national trend toward high-end, high-rent, high-quality product that is targeted toward a growing segment of professional tenants who seek apartment living, not because of price point, but because of lifestyle choice. Well, they're talking about starting at about $1,000 a month, which, being that close to ASU East, $1,000 a month is not a lot of money compared to the other apartment complexes right there, and it's just going to end up becoming a dorm room with no fence, separating our neighborhood from the apartment complex. I just have one, one more quick thing, I know I have five seconds, but. The other issue from the, from the city's perspective is making it walkable, and I think a couple of councilmembers talked about it last time, about walking trails, et cetera, with the original plans. Well, there's no walking trails. If you come out to our neighborhood, we can have a cup of coffee, and I'll show you. There's no walking trails within a mile of our house. With the original plans for the shops and stuff, I could totally see that, but not for an apartment complex. But it's not really a walkable area, like I said. There's also no fence between our subdivision and the Willows, which are also single-family houses just north of us. There's a fence separating us and them, but no planned fence for an apartment complex separated from our neighborhood. But like I said, I understand that no fence, if it was as originally planned, however, since it's just another apartment complex, why not separate it like every other complex in the city is? Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Jeter? Moving on, we have Jeff, who says he does not wish to speak, but wishes that they would build a wall around the apartments. Another, Jamie Youngen, says that he is opposed to this and does not wish to speak, but please put a fence on Haskell and no driveway in on Haskell. And another one that is opposed and does not wish to speak, Tristan Bungen, Youngen. Please put a fence on Haskell and no driveway on Haskell. So there you have it. Sydney, would you like to come up and, and address that, or would you like to turn that over to the applicant? Okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant. Please, come on up.
Vice Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Greg Davis with I Plan Consulting. I'm here on behalf of Conanel Properties Circle G and the Geesele family, and I thank you for being here tonight. I do have a brief presentation, if you don't mind me giving it, which I think explains a lot as to why we're not proposing gates and fences in this area, so is that okay if I walk, walk through that quickly?
Please do.
I'll skip around to save you some of the more exciting parts, but basically, for, especially since there are so many new commissioners here tonight, this area is a very unique area in the town. Sydney mentioned the Gateway Character Area, it's a special general plan level, but it's also part of Cooley Station in the Village Center. And for those that weren't around when those were created 20 years ago, the whole intent of this area is to create a neo-traditional neighborhood, where we don't have walls, we don't have gates, we have homes that front onto streets instead of back, and we have more openness and connectivity. So those are the guiding principles for this entire area of the town. So we came before the council at the September 19th hearing for a zoning change, which obviously the commission saw back in August, and they approved the, the change of zoning to multifamily medium, and they included two very important and specific deviations. First was the reduction of the building setbacks. Most projects in the Gilbert Gateway Character Area have reduced front setbacks so that you can bring the buildings closer to the street, in, in line with what the tenants of the Character Area are. And the second one is that there was no wall requirement along the north, east, and south boundary, because those are zoned residential. We do have a wall along our west boundary, because that area is zoned commercial, and the code does require an eight-foot wall between residential and commercial uses. So that did remain. But I'm going to jump back just quickly, a little further, about 20 years ago, back in the late 90s, early 2000s, the Cooley family and the Geesele family, who controlled all the property in color there on the display, got together with the town, and they wanted to create something special and unique, because ASU East was just talking about expanding. Gateway Airport, which is now Phoenix Mesa Gateway Airport, was also talking about expanding. So this was an opportunity for the landowners to bring something different to the town, and so they got together with the town and created what's now called Cooley Station and the Village Center. And so the Village Center on this display is everything that's right here. This is about 80 acres in size, and this is where our site is located. So the Village Center, which this is a conceptual plan for back in the late 90s, was really meant to be a very urban, intense area. It was kind of modeled after Mill Avenue, which also has a school campus nearby, but it was really premised on this idea of vertical mixed-use, where you'd, you could have office or retail on the first floor, and then you could have up to five stories of apartments above it. So that's what the ground was zoned for up until September 19th. Potential retail office with five stories of residential, up to 50 units per acre. But the main concept that is still part of the Village Center in the Gateway area is that idea of pedestrian orientation. So in 2006, 2008, there wasn't a lot happening development-wise. The town got together with the families, and they decided to enter in a development agreement to put in about $25 million of improvements. So if any of you have driven out there and asked the question of why do we have wide sidewalks and on-street parallel parking and trees next to a farm field, that's why. The town and the families really wanted to show everybody that we want to do something here, can we spark some interest? And unfortunately, it was just bad timing. 2008, you know, saw all of the development industry take a hit. And although a lot of the different facets of development have come back, the retail one specifically hasn't. The retail landscape has changed, I think, forever due to online shopping, and, and though we still get some stick-and-brick shops, they mostly want to locate around an activity node such as Santan Village, et cetera. So all this led to everyone deciding that we need to make a change here. And that started to change in 2017, when the Cooley family got together with the town and said, okay, we still want to do a Village Center, we want that neo-traditional concept on a commercial level, but we know we're not going to get 80 acres of it, so what can we do? So they decided to reduce the amount of acreage to about 40 and locate it on the southwest corner. For instance, that's where the Verdi project is, that many of you have seen come through the process. That also ties into the town's transit center, which is located, a future transit center, which is located down here. What that meant for the rest of the properties is that the town would entertain more traditional land uses, but they still wanted to see the character development of the neo-traditional style and design tenants, such as the openness, the pedestrian connection, et cetera. And so as projects have come And so as projects have come through, they have had that element to them. So this is our project, and I want to touch on some of our, the ways that our project is designed to be in conformance with that general plan character area. And the first one is just eyes on the street. And the reason we have reduced setbacks is that the town really wants to promote interactivity along the street frontage. Instead of having walls on both sides of the street, and you only see the road when you're driving a car, they wanted to turn that around. And so the neighborhood to the north, uh, the Fincher Fields Project, all these homes actually front onto the street, their front doors are onto the street, and they have a sidewalk running down there. In a traditional neighborhood, you would have a wall and the homes would face the other direction. Same with this project. In a traditional scenario and other parts of the town, in a multifamily, would probably have a wall along here, and the apartments would open up to the other direction. That's not what's done here. All these living areas along Haskell and along Williamsfield are pushed to the edge, so there's a lot of visibility and interaction with that street. And that leads to also access. All of the front doors, you can see these sidewalks go directly out to the street sidewalk here, same with the north. So a fence along here would be very problematic, because the residents would have to park in their, uh, designate a spot, go out through a gate, walk along the street frontage, walk back through a gate into their house. So it just doesn't make a lot of sense, and it doesn't meet what this, this area is all about, which is about being open and have interaction with your neighbors. Parking in the rear, I think Sidney touched on that, so we'll skip over that. And the last one is just, again, this walkability-permeability aspect of it. The intent is to allow people to interact with each other and get to where they need to go without getting in their car, and without having to walk around neighborhoods. For instance, if there was a bus stop down here, we wouldn't want people to have to walk all the way around to Wrecker, down and around, they can come through the project. And that's why our project does have a very strong pedestrian connection in these white sidewalks you see. We have the east-west connections along both street frontages, but we, we also have the north-south access points and, and sidewalks, which connect everything all together. So that's why we've designed it in this manner. Uh, we think it's what the town and the general plan asks for, and at this point, that's what we're asking you to support. So, uh, if you have any questions about my presentation or any aspect of the project, I'd be glad to answer them.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Comments? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Since we have no other members of the public that wish to speak on this item, close the public hearing and bring it up to the dais, correct? So we'll just... Oh. Sidney, Commissioner Cavaney has some questions for you, if you'd come up.
Thank you, Sidney. So I, I think my only real question is more process here. I, I definitely appreciate the explanation of the intent of the design, but I also definitely understand, um, the neighbors' concerns with maybe not being helped along that process to understand it as well. So do you have any context for town council's comments about design being revisited later, that this is not a done deal, and certainly we can look at adding those back? I mean, those, those comments seem to suggest that these homeowners were given some hope that they could have influence on that design change.
Uh, Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney. So, um, at the September 19th Town Council hearing, um, the members of the council did vote to approve at 5-0, and they did have discussion on, they stated that most of the concerns of the residents had to do with design, so they, with their statements up on the dais, discussed why they were approving it based off of land use, but that they should work, um, to come to this planning commission hearing in order to get design elements, um, to be worked out. So to kind of discuss, though, where the timeline was with this whole project, so the first, uh, neighborhood meeting was in October of 2018, when it was presented, so this also is a discussion at Town Council, that the original presentation, um, of the, um, project was gated, um, when they were originally proposing it. So in the town of Gilbert, before you do your pre-application meeting, you do have to have a neighborhood meeting to provide neighborhood, um, input first. So once it did come in for pre-application, that is when staff pursued, asking them to get rid of the fencing, so that was a discussion of their original rendition that they saw did have fencing. Um, there was a follow-up meeting in June of 2019? In, uh, June of 2019, where there was less residents that attended, but this proposal was presented at that meeting. So I think where some of the confusion goes is where the Town Council approved it and the design review is running concurrently, um, with the rezoning and general plan, so therefore there is only about two and a half weeks in between the land use and, uh, approval, and now the design review, so it doesn't leave as much room as the council were kind of discussing up there to make changes to the, uh, design. Uh, it's my understanding that there were some efforts by the developer to reach out to members of the public, um, but he could speak a little bit more on what type of discussions they had after Town Council. I did not have anyone reach out to me to have a discussion.
Well, so, so I, I understand that the intent, the design intent is to be interactive and open, no walls, no barriers, but was that based upon the original 80-acre town center concept, and now we're replacing that with a multifamily component? Does that not change some of that, could that not, should that not change some of that design intent perhaps, in that it is a completely different use than a commercial retail?
Um, Commissioner Cavaney, so as our general plan stands today, we have this within our, um, Gateway Character Area as design standards and design policies that are for this specific area within the gateway, and then also there are specific elements for the Gateway Village Center. So I understand the discussion with, since this is different than what the Village Center was intended, uh, intended to be, but the gateway concepts as a whole, for that whole area that goes all the way over to Power also do promote openness, so that could be a discussion of, since it has shifted slightly, but we still believe that even though it has changed, that we want to keep this as a unique area with different elements that are specific here, opposed to the rest of the town that is more suburban in nature. So kind of what we've accomplished in the Heritage District, trying to, as this develops, not throw in the towel quite yet.
Right, no, fair, I appreciate that. Thank you, I'd be interested to hear some of the other commissioners' thoughts on that usage change. I mean, I, I have to also think in my own mind, if it were a commercial retail, and a homeowner's driveway opens up to the street, right across the street, what experience is that like too, right? That may not be any better or different than facing an apartment complex front door either, so, um, so maybe it's one half dozen or another, right? But okay, I'm interested to hear everyone's thoughts on that, but thank you for your context.
Thank you, Sidney. Um, I do have one question, I mean, remember the public that spoke, talked about price points for this apartment complex and what they're trying to do, and, and the concern that it becomes a dorm room for ASU East and, and all that that brings, and neighborhoods and college dorms, does that really interact and, and work well? So, I, I guess, I guess I didn't hear any comments to that from, from Greg, if you want, from the applicant, if you'd like to come up and address that, that might be appropriate or helpful. It's not really a design review issue, but it's a concern that was brought up by the public, maybe we can address it.
Good evening, Vice Chair, Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is Eric Um, I'm with Conanel Properties, uh, West 134 North 8675 Executive Parkway. I'm in, in Menominee Falls, Wisconsin. And to answer your question, Vice Chair, about kind of our price points and, and some advertising this as a market rate, uh, community, specifically regarding the interaction with ASU and this becoming a, a more of a dorm room, um, our, our qualify, or, uh, in order for a tenant to qualify, um, to live in any one of our developments, they do have certain income levels that they have to meet, uh, we do have a pretty strict process of, um, of qualification for tenants, and, uh, our price points, the, the lower end is going to be the studio units, which is a fair, uh, a smaller percentage of our overall unit share. Uh, we do have a lot of one and two bedrooms in that price, that, those prices do increase as you go, uh, higher in, uh, in bedrooms and, and square footage. Uh, so our rents, uh, on the low end are about, uh, 1,000 to 1,100, depending on your finishes, you could get 1,200, uh, for a studio unit, but then, uh, rents span all the way up to, uh, over 2,000, uh, for a three-bedroom unit, depending on, uh, if you have a detached garage or an upgraded unit, uh, based on your many package that you want. So I do not, uh, I know we don't have any concerns of interaction with ASU, um, or any concerns about it turning into a, a more of a dorm room type community.
Okay, thank you. I know it's not a design review issue, but at, at the same time, it was a concern that I felt like should be addressed, so, um, I don't have anything, any other questions, anybody else? Can we bring it up to the dais? Do you have one more comment?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, there's been a number of comments related to the ingress-egress on Haskell, and I, I just want to understand, is it even legal to not have, through the code, and this might be something that Sidney may have to answer, to only have that single ingress-egress? Um, I, I don't believe that it would be, but I don't know. I mean, if they were to not have any driveways on Haskell, I don't think that would work with the code, is that correct?
Uh, Commissioner Munt, um, correct. So based off of the number of units and the fact that it's, um, over 50 dwelling units, they're required to at least have two points of access. The third point of access that is required is due to the number of units they have from fire, so it is a requirement to have the number of access points that they have, and the, um, locations of them have been vetted through the process with traffic engineering, um, as well as fire.
Okay, thank you.
Sidney, while you're there, do you anticipate, just given, given the nature of the area and the development as you've seen out there, what do you anticipate being the traffic pattern primarily out of these three? I see him mostly coming out to Williamsfield Road, based on how development is currently out there, but I don't know, you might know something different.
Uh, Vice Chair, there was a traffic impact study that was submitted with this project. I would have to review it again to look at exactly what they're anticipating. Uh, the applicant may know, but, um, I do not know exactly which way and how much they are anticipating. I could pull up the study and, um, take a look at it and get back to you, but unfortunately, I don't know it off the top of my head.
We finally stumped you. Gosh, you've been so impressive all night long, I've, I wondered what it would take. No, Sidney, thank you, and, and if the applicant has something that they would like to add, Greg?
Mr. Vice Chairman, yeah, the traffic study, um, obviously Williamsfield is a main point of access, we fought really hard that, that wouldn't be a median, so we have full access out to Williamsfield, that's where the main traffic levels are, that's where the signals go, so we anticipate the majority of traffic's gonna go that way. We originally did not have a point on Haskell, but as Sidney mentioned, traffic and general required us to have it, and they did require to have it at that specific location, because it lines up with the entrance to the neighborhood to the north.
That makes sense to me, so, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're all done with our questions, right? Bring it up to the dais and have any discussion we want, and we're gonna close the public hearing then and bring it up. Anybody have any comments? Emotions, all entertained, whatever. Commissioner Alabrandi?
I'm familiar with the area, I live nearby, drive by there often, and I have noted that a number of the multifamily homes or duet homes there are facing out on the street, so I understand the character issue. So to Commissioner Cavaney's comment earlier, is this, the, the land use has changed, but it's still the same feel in that neighborhood, so I get that, and if everything's opening up on the street. I did have one question, though, for Sidney, on, uh, the applicant mentioned something about a five-story, uh, allowance, but yet I see in the LDC, it only says up to 40 feet, and that's a 30, a three-story max. Was that change recently, or did somebody misspeak?
Uh, Commissioner Alabrandi, so it was originally zoned Gateway Village Center up to, um, the September 19th Town Council hearing, so-
That was the change?
Gateway Village Center allows up to 90 feet, um, and up to six stories, so what he was referencing is loft above, so loft above living is permitted in that zoning district, so he was talking about how the first floor, um, at, was permitted by right to be, um, some sort of commercial, um, and the additional five stories above would then be loft above, so he was describing of what type of density was permitted before, and now this is actually length density, now the multifamily medium where the cap is 40 feet opposed to 90 feet.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any motions? Any more discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
When you make a motion on, on a case like this-
Again, contingent of the notes?
Yeah. If you'll go to the packet that says staff recommendation, if you'll read that, that's-
I guess, yes, I make a motion to approve contingent upon approval of all the staff recommendations.
Okay. Motion made, my Commissioner Munt?
Uh, Vice Chair Bloomfield, we had one last-minute condition added.
Okay.
Bear with me just a minute.
Sure.
Then I remove my motion.
And while, while he's looking that up, let me, let me just acknowledge that, because I, I, I was hoping to have more conversation on the actual general design, but, but I think, um, I think the one thing to remember is, and I, I'm certainly sensitive to the Homeowners Association president that was here, is that this, this is contemplated to be a different kind of living, a different, different style of living, and I, I can, I, I'm, I, I understand and, and sympathize with, uh, getting used to that, especially with apartments, but I think, uh, if you had a commercial across, especially loft living above commercial, that would be very intense and probably even more, uh, obtrusive. So I think in the end, given the, the usage that's been approved, this is probably not, not as, not as bad as it could be, it's gonna be a different way of living, it's gonna be, you have to learn to kind of work together and live together and open, live open, but I think it's, uh, it's probably the right thing to do to keep the character, so, anyway. Thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavaney. Okay.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, there are a couple of changes, so if a motion is made, uh, we would ask that you highlight the modified conditions and number, under condition number four up on the screen, where the submittal is crossed out and it's approval, instead of submittal, if you could make that note for condition number four, as well as the, the bolded or the, um, all-caps language in condition number six, make sure that gets added if a motion is-
Okay, so let me, let me, let me try this motion then, so, um, from the staff report, I move to approve the findings of fact and approve DR 19-83 Springs at Cooley Station, subject to the conditions recommended by staff, specifically condition number four, where a reclaimed water agreement must be completed and approved by the Water Resources and Conservation Coordinator prior to construction document approval, and condition number six, that all outstanding engineering comments must be incorporated into the construction document's submittal.
Okay.
With the addition of, if you could read that language as well.
If, the last line in caps?
Yeah.
If, if required retention is being provided off-site, a retention easement must be granted over the new off-site retention area in a form approved by the town attorney.
Okay. We're glad you're here, town attorney, to help us be right on that. Okay. Motion-
Oh, seconded up?
By Commissioner Cavaney and seconded by Commissioner Munt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on. Thank you to members of the public who came out and, and helped us get a little better perspective on everything, I appreciate that. Moving on to item number 23, DR 19-93 Big O Tires. Have a couple of people who wish to speak on this, but, uh, we'll have a presentation first by Josh Rogers.
Good evening, Vice Chair Bloomfield, um, commission members, for all the new commissioners, I am Josh Rogers, I'm a planner with the town. Um, the case before you is DR 1993 Big O Tires. This is actually located a little bit down the street from the site that you just viewed on Higley and Williamsfield Road. It is for a Big O Tires within an established, master-planned, um, commercial center on the southeast corner of Williamsfield and Higley. The shopping center is ironically called the Center at Higley. It's an approved, um, site that was approved by the Planning Commission and, um, back in 2002, which started off with the Walgreens at the corner, and it has slowly, um, developed since then. If you notice on the screen, this is the current iteration with the proposed Big O Tires, uh, superimposed on the, uh, the approved master site plan, um, so you notice, um, Big O Tires, it's currently located between the existing Walgreens and the existing- the existing Salad and Go facility off to the, the east. Also, if you'll notice, there were a few comments by the public in regards, there is a school to the, within the same center, to the southeast of the proposed site for the Big O Tires. Just to highlight and just real quick, the site plan, just to orientate yourself, Williams Field is to your right on the site plan, so north is to the right, just the best way for the site plan to fit on the screen, but if you'll notice by the, the elevations, they will have bay doors, but the applicant has focused those bay doors away from the school and away from the residential, they're facing them to the west, so the bay doors will be located on the west side of the building, facing the existing Walgreens and away from residential towards Higley Road, just to orient and trying to drive the sound away from the school and the, and the residential area. Other than that, the applicant, the design of the building, it matches and it blends in with the buildings that are, have been approved and that are existing within the center. Same goes for the colors and the materials as well, desert, beiges and tans, as well as the, the brick that they proposed to add on the building as well. So that is, is end of my presentation. We do recommend approval of DR 1993, subject to the conditions located on your, your staff report, and just real quick, before I answer any questions from the commission, I do want to highlight, in between when you were sent your packets and tonight, I did receive feedback from two members of the public. During the break, I did put an email that was sent to me in front of each of your chairs. I did correspond with this resident, and he was mainly opposed to the Big O Tire as a use on this site. He did not have any, really any comment on the design, other than the location of the bay doors, which it appeared, and through my conversations with him, it appeared that they were, he felt that they were going to be facing the, the school in the lower right-hand corner of the site, but I clarified with him that the, the bay doors for this Big O will be facing the opposite direction towards Higley Road and away from them. I also had an in-person conversation with another resident who had similar concerns, they were just concerned about the use itself, not really of the design, other than the bay doors and which way they were going to be facing, and any potential noise and that being directed away from the existing residential and the school, but through conversations, I just, I assured him that they were pointed away as with the other resident. So those were the only two comments from the public that staff has received, received up to this point, so if you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer them for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, Josh, I do have one question. Where's, where's the childcare facility that Skip referenced relative to this?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, so if you'll notice on the screen, proposed Big O Tires is where I'm circling, and then the childcare is in the lower right-hand corner.
Okay.
And to be fair, when this master site plan was originally approved, it was intended to be some sort of drive-through coffee shop, so it was always intended to be a kind of a high-intensity use.
Okay. Hours of operation, do you have any comments regarding that?
Do you know hours of operation for the tire store?
I do not know, but the applicant is here.
Okay.
Do you know? Eight to five?
Yeah. All right. Any other questions for Josh? I'm here, Commissioner September.
Is that eight to five, Monday through Friday, or eight to five every day?
Commissioner September, if you mind, I don't know that answer. The applicant is here, and he might be able to shed a little more light on that, if. Commissioner September, Vice Chair Bloomfield, he did say that the current facilities are just Monday through Friday, correct? Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah. Sounds good. They face west, they face west. Commissioner Munt.
Yes, thank you. I just have one question related to the, like a noise ordinance. Am I understanding that the use, although different from a coffee shop, will still meet any, will not exceed noise ordinances within the town?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Munt, that is correct, they are still subject to the noise ordinances that have been adopted in our municipal code. They're still subject to those.
Thank you.
And I do want to add that we do have a noise meter, that if there are complaints, we actually do have noise meters that go out there and measure the noise.
Okay. Yes.
So, Josh, I see that the, I'm just trying to look at connectivity to the vacant parcel to the south. Is that just, is that for ever going to be a retention basin, or is there planned development there, or is it available to be developed?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney, it is available for development. We are hoping that something develops down there, but there are not any plans as of right now, and as for connectivity, if you look, there is actually a pedestrian walkway that is in, if you can notice on my pointer, there's a pedestrian walkway that actually cuts south, and hopefully will connect to whatever develops there along with the, there's a pedestrian walkway along the east side of this drive aisle, the main drive aisle from William, Williams Field, so we do have plans and everything's prepared for it to develop in the future.
What's the intended vehicular access to that parcel? Is it from the Big O parking bay, or is it from one of the ones on the east or west of it?
Commissioner Cavaney, it is hard to see, but there's a drive aisle that comes down where my pointer is, and then there is an internal drive aisle that's pretty much splits this in half, north and south, so it'll come from this east to west drive aisle.
So currently, people could come in off of Higley on that, that mid-street and access the Big O parking lot, they could turn up in right there, right, where you're, they could turn up. Okay, so that is open.
And that already has been built.
Okay. What I'm, what I'm trying to determine and contemplate is if there's an opportunity for some kind of physical wall or, or hard barrier that keeps and deflects some of the sound that might be a concern for those to the south, that's all. And it doesn't look like it can be consistently across, but maybe could actually be an extension of the building for just a bit to kind of interrupt some of that potential drilling noise and so forth that tire stores make. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Bloomfield, the applicant wanted to point out that there are some instances of Big O tires that are open seven days a week, however, they're not 100% as to this point, if it'll follow the majority of the Big O and be five days a week or the seven days a week.
Okay, fair enough. I don't think there's anything in our, our conditions that would limit days and hours. Yeah, yeah, we're just wondering about the hours of noise impact to the residents potentially, so. There's nothing in here that's going to limit you to Monday through Friday, eight to five. Other questions? Okay, I think we're going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion up here?
So, my initial thoughts and feedback are that I think, given the use, okay, it is a zone commercial, it can be this, so is it configured in a way that most or least impacts the adjacent properties? And I think, given that the bays do face west, away from any residential or school, you're going to get a lot of mitigation of any sound interruption because of that. I, I do think, yeah, I do, I do think the orientation kind of saves the day. I think if it had spun 90 degrees, it might not be so, so good, but I think, I think it's good. I don't see any, any issue with their impacting the neighbors dramatically, and especially if they are able to keep their hours eight to five, then evening hours would be quiet and there wouldn't be any impact there either. So I think I'm, I'm good with it.
Thank you, Commissioner Cavaney, I agree, and I think they've taken a hit upon themselves as the owners trying to turn those bays to the west to have the west-facing sun coming in there, that cannot be a, a good condition when you're working, so I think they've taken the hit on themselves to try to mitigate that, and I think that, that adds some credence to what they're requesting here, so. Plus, I've heard the word of cappuccino machines, it's kind of similar to a pneumatic gun, I'm just kidding, yeah. All right. That being said, do we have a motion? Please, Commissioner Cavaney. Oh, Commissioner Munt, oh, Commissioner Smith.
I move to approve item number 23, AR 19-93.
Okay. Subject to the findings of fact in the commission, yeah.
Findings of facts of the commission.
Okay, I think that's acceptable, is that right, attorney? Okay, all right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Cavaney, seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay. Keep turning my microphone off, because that's what I'm used to doing, so, sorry about that. Next up, item number 24, and these items, number 24 and 25, are related to our major general plan amendment and a zoning case, and we heard off-site last month, the major, our off-site meeting, and so we'll look forward to hearing from you, Ava, to present those two cases again tonight.
Good evening again, Vice Chair Bloomfield and Commission. As stated, I will be presenting to you General Plan Major Amendment 1809 and Zoning Amendment 18-19. Ashley McDonald is the planner assigned to this case, but could not be here this evening. The property is located on the northeast corner of Warner and Wrecker, and is surrounded by a mix of residential, vacant land zone residential, churches, schools, and to the east, general commercial, business park, and light industrial. As mentioned, this is a major general plan amendment, because it is over 40 acres in size, and the use is going from a non-residential use to a predominantly residential use. On the left, you can see the current general plan exhibit. It shows the property as being a mix of business park, 28 acres, light industrial, over 87 acres, and community commercial at about nine acres. What is being proposed is a mix of light industrial at about 30 acres, and residential at 18.2, 10.8, 65.6, so a total of 84.2 acres of a mix of residential, 30.6 acres of light industrial, for a total of 124.8 acres. Along with the general plan amendment is a zoning amendment. Again, on the left is the current zoning, light industrial, business park, and community commercial, and again, the proposed change to light industrial and a mix of single-family eight-tatched, single-family detached, single-family six, and single-family seven, as well as the 30 acres of light industrial that would be adjacent to the light industrial and business park to the east. Along with the rezoning is a pad overlay, because the applicant will be deviating from some of the standards in the Land Development Code. The deviations are quite lengthy, so I'll go through them quickly, but please stop me if you want additional information. Starting with the single-family attached, that is the product in this corner, there are smaller lot sizes than what the LDC recommends, however, there are also reduced heights and stories. From 36 three-story, the applicant is proposing 30-feet heights and two-story. There is also a change to the rear yard setback proposed. Currently, the LDC recommends 10-foot, and the applicant is proposing zero, but three-foot to the face of the garage. And the applicant is also proposing a large open area on the corner here, that would equal 22,500 square feet of open space on that corner. Moving along to the single-family detached product, there are deviations requested there as well, the main one being to the heights. The Land Development Code allows 36-feet height, three stories, and the applicant is proposing 30-foot height, two stories. There are also deviations to the setbacks. Currently, the front yard setback is noted as 10 feet, and the applicant is proposing 20 feet if there's a front-facing garage, but reducing to eight feet to livable. The side yard setbacks are also proposed to deviate. The LDC lists them as zero-foot and five-foot. The applicant is recommending five-foot and five-foot. And the applicant is also requesting a different rear yard setback. The LDC lists the rear yard setback at 10 feet. The applicant is proposing 15 feet to the home, but only five feet to the covered patio and a rear yard. One last deviation is along this line where residential would join light industrial. The LDC limits to one story, and the applicant is proposing two-story along that edge. Moving on to the single-family six in this area, the applicant is recommending a change to the lot width and depth. Currently, it's proposed in the LDC at 55 feet, 100 feet in depth, and the applicant is proposing 55 feet with 115 feet in depth, so an increased depth on the lots. But also a change to the setbacks in the front yard, the LDC lists a setback of 20 feet, and the applicant is proposing 20 feet if you're to a front-facing garage, but 10 feet to livable space, a porch, or a side-entry garage. The applicant, I'm sorry, that's all that's being proposed in the SF6, and then moving on to the SF7, there is also a change to the lot width and depth. In this category, the LDC recommends 65 feet, 100-foot depth, and the applicant is proposing 60 feet, 120-foot depth, so these lots are narrower but deeper. Again, the same deviation to the front yard setback, rather than the standard 20, the applicant is proposing 10-foot if it's to livable porch or a side-entry garage. And lastly, in the light industrial area, the applicant is recommending a deviation. Normally, there is a 30-foot separation between single-family attached and light industrial, and the applicant is only proposing a 20-foot separation in that area. The, this has come before you at two public hearings, the last one was at the library two weeks ago. The next step would be for it to go to the Town Council hearing on October 17th. At this time, staff is requesting that the Planning Commission make a motion to the Town Council to approve the general plan amendment to change the land use classification from a mix of business park, light industrial, and community commercial to light industrial and a mix of residential. Staff is also requesting that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the rezoning. Again, it's rezoning the 125 acres from business park, light industrial, and community commercial to the mix of residential and light industrial. However, the rezoning would be subject to eight standard conditions. Those conditions include dedication of the 180th Street right-of-way, construction of off-site improvements to Warner Road, Wrecker Road, and 180th Street, entering into a development agreement for reimbursement and liens, dedicating all necessary easements, creating an HOA for residential development, and a POA for the non-residential light industrial. The developer shall record easements to be owned by the HOA or POA for pedestrian bicycle multi-use or trail system purposes, and that prior to final plat, the developer shall pay for its proportional share of water and sewer mains. And lastly, the project shall be developed in conformance with Gilbert zoning requirements and with the modifications that follow. There are two charts attached, these just detail the modifications I went through quickly. These just detail the modifications I went through quickly at the beginning of this presentation. And that concludes my presentation. However, the applicant is also here with a presentation, if you'd like to hear that first, or I'm available for questions at this time.
Thank you, Ava. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think what we'll do is we'll just go ahead and have the applicant stand up and if he has anything to add, and then we'll have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, members of the commission, my name's Adam Baugh, and I have to state that for the record because this beard is throwing you off. A week ago, I didn't have it, but I wore it in honor and in support of our new commissioner, Jan Simon, so I didn't feel so alone up there today. I appreciate your time today, and this is the third time you've seen this case now the last four months, and if you add him to three times last year, it's six times. And so it's a site you're very familiar with. I certainly appreciate the favorable feedback you provided at the planning commission and at the special meeting two weeks ago. And we also appreciate the unanimous support of the plan last year. As you can see, some components have changed. When I took over this case in February, there were some challenges that we faced. We had a number of items I had to work through, and that work and collaboration involved both planning staff, economic development, town management, the school districts, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. And we learned some things. We made some significant changes, but it was, more importantly, we learned to listen, and listen, and listen, and then take that direction and feedback and bring in a plan that they can support today. First and most critical, though, was designating and defining specifically almost 31 acres of employment uses, and not just throwing those colors on a map, but actually showing what those mean as far as drive aisles and parking locations, buffers and setbacks, and 250,000 square feet of building space and truck wells, and then taking that to brokers and industrial users to figure out if this is what fits that area and be able to come back in confidence knowing that this is a good land plan. And once we could settle on that, we could then layer in the balance of the residential uses behind it. And through that collaborative effort, we are now here before today with a recommendation of support from your planning commission, excuse me, from your planning staff, your economic development department, the neighbors nearby, no opposition from them, and as of last week, a letter of support from the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce as well. At the end of the day, this is really just about right sizing the property to make it more likely and more appropriately designated to attract an employment user, and also maintain the balance of the site consistent with the residential character that surrounds it. At the last meeting, the chairman joked that I went a little long, and so he was going to take some time off of me for today, and I certainly appreciate that. Attorneys are never known to talk enough, but I understand that you're here purely voluntarily, and so I want to be respectful of your time. I do have a presentation I can give. It's right along. Many of you heard it last time, and I can give it again, but out of respect for your time and the presentation that staff's given, I would be happy to end my comments and take any questions you have, or abide and present.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Baugh. I appreciate that. Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff or the applicant? Commissioner Allen Brandy.
I continue to be concerned about the zeroing out of minimum setbacks when you go from 10 to zero. Could you please refresh us if there are things unique to the shape of the property and the placements of the streets that why that's a good idea? Thanks.
Absolutely. I think the area that you're most, if you're talking about zero-foot setbacks, we're talking about... Do we use the mouse?
Yes, use the mouse, please.
There we go. The area we're requesting a zero-foot setback is only in this product in here, and the reason is this is a single-family attached product, town home product, and typically this would be in a multifamily zoning district. The one concern we heard as we were working with stakeholders in the very beginning was bringing in a multifamily zoning category, and if this plan gets approved today, but changes later on, and having apartments sneak in under the zoning for apartments. And so to avoid that possibility, we have zoned it for SFA, but designed it and planned it in a manner that matches the, this product, which is just two miles down the street at Wrecker in Williamsfield. And so it's the same product, same dimensions, same lot coverage as before. It's just trying to fit this within an SFA rather than a multifamily category to avoid the potential of multifamily down the road.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? I only have one.
Yes.
We voted to approve it last year. We apologize if you've wasted time and effort and energy to get to this point, but we're grateful. And I, for one, am grateful for the development, for the interest in the area, for the willingness to stick with it and go through the process and accommodate the town and the staff. I look forward to voting yes on this, so.
So I know a lot of the commissioners up here are new. They didn't get a chance to hear this the last five times. So just to just share some of the reasons for the positive feedback in the last couple of times is that they've really been thoughtful about how they've designed some of the pieces so in the event that the use changes, that it does have enough depth, it does have enough separation, and it makes sense. I also think they've stepped back and looked at the context of this development with relation to the rest of the properties in the area, and I think have done a fairly good job in making it fit. So I think that's, just to give you kind of a higher view of why it was positive when we dug into the granular, those are the things that stuck out to me. So I just to kind of throw that out there since a lot of them haven't had a chance to really hear the full presentation.
Thank you.
That being said, somebody have a motion? Okay, Commissioner.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve GP 1809 and Z 18-18.
We have to have separate motions on that.
My apologies. I'm going to stick then with motion for GP 1809 along with contingent conditions within the report.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Munt and seconded by... Okay, okay. Commissioner Yan, sorry, I forget your last name now, Simon. Okay. Commissioner Simon. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay. Commissioner Munt.
Yes, I'd also like to make a motion to approve motion Z 18-19, contingent with all comments within the report as well.
We're going to recommend approval to the town council of that.
Yes, recommend approval to the town council.
All right.
I'm new, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're doing great. Like I said, it took me six months to speak in these meetings.
I'll second that one. I'll second that one, Vice Chair.
Motion made and seconded by Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, down to the last case of the evening. Thank you, everyone, for your participation so far. Item number 26, Z 19, case Z 19-04, LDC text amendment. We're going to be hearing from Sydney again. We already stumped you once, we won't try it anymore. This'll be easy.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the commission. The request before you tonight is to recommend approval to the town council for a request to amend the land development code related to the addition of a new type of rooftop sign in certain locations within the Heritage Village Center zoning district. To provide some background, on April 3, 2019, the planning commission initiated this text amendment. Since then, there have been four additional public hearings for this text amendment, two of them continuance. The last public hearing was on September 18, 2019, and the redevelopment commission recommended approval with a four-to-one vote to the planning commission of Z 19-04. At that same meeting, there were members of the public who spoke in opposition to the proposed text amendment. Two spoke in opposition, and six members of the public were present and were in opposition but did not wish to speak. Members of the public stated that the proposal conflicts with redevelopment goals, creates harmful competition with the existing water tower, negatively impacts the residential areas within the district, and does not complement the small-town feel that is fostered within the Heritage District. There is also a member of the public who was there and spoke in support of the proposed text amendment. To provide some context, our land development code presently does not permit rooftop signage. Most other cities research do not permit new rooftop signs. However, there are some cities that do allow it, and there has been a new resurgence of preserved or restored signs that have been permitted in some municipalities. I'll get further into the actual text, but this is only proposed within the Heritage District along Gilbert Road, but we believe that this is the most appropriate area for rooftop signs to be due to the neon that is already existing and the existing Heritage District design guidelines that emphasize signs that are highly graphic in form, expressive and individualized to create a distinctive character, and include exposed neon lighting. This unique sign type would add to the distinctive sense of place already fostered within the Heritage District by encouraging a creative approach to signage through extraordinary aesthetic quality, creativity, or innovation. I'm going to give a brief overview of the different segments of the proposed text amendment. So these signs would only be permitted in the Heritage Village Center zoning district. So this is a zoning district that is unique just to the Heritage District, and it'd only be permitted on buildings three stories above ground and taller, fronting Gilbert Road. So this is the boundary of the Heritage District up here on Juniper. Going down Gilbert Road, all the buildings fronting that are three stories and taller would be qualifiers for a rooftop sign, and then it's split into three segments, and only one sign will be permitted per bounded area. So only a total of three signs would be permitted within the Heritage District and dispersed through these three areas. Segment one is bounded by the edge of the Heritage District at Juniper Avenue to the north, and then the canal to the south. District two is bounded by the canal to the north, and then the railroads to the south. And then District three is bounded by the railroad to the north, and then Elliott Road to the south. So only buildings within the Heritage Village Center zoning district, fronting Gilbert Road, above three stories or taller, and only one permitted per district. Moving on to content for the signs. So the sign would be considered a non-commercial sign as it would not promote a particular business service or product. So this will not be a sign that'd be permitted for advertising of something like Whiskey Row or that. It would have to be a non-commercial message. However, we are not, we do not have the ability to regulate the content of the sign. We can only regulate the items that I'll keep describing, such as location, design, size, height. So those are items we can regulate, but content, we can only regulate that it is non-commercial. In regards to the size, height, and design, the areas must not exceed 200 square feet. The height must not extend more than 15 feet above the roof line. It has to be located a minimum of two feet from the edge of roof, and the signed copy must be mounted as stylized individual letters and graphics. Moving on to lighting and design guidelines, the lighting must be exposed neon, decorative bulbs or tubing, and must be architecturally compatible with the building. It has to comply with Arizona revised statutes and the Town of Gilbert Municipal Code relating to lighting, and it has to comply with the existing Heritage District design guidelines relating to lighting. After this, after you make a recommendation, with your recommendation and also the redevelopment commission's recommendation, this will proceed forward to town council on October 17, 2019 for the final decision. And staff is recommending approval to the town council for Z 19-04, and I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Sydney. Well done. Our first question is going to come from Commissioner Cavaney.
So I'm just, everything was just sounding wonderful. I didn't even have a thought until all of a sudden you said they were non-commercial signs. What are we anticipating will be a typical content on a sign? Who's going to pay to put a sign like this up if they're not receiving revenue off of it somehow?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney. So there was a downtown interest that originally brought this forward and asked about this being a possibility in the downtown. So it's a building, 313 building, they proposed putting Gilbert in neon on top of their building, so something of that nature. We originally had a rendition of this proposal that discussed this of being a district identifier and trying to push people towards doing Gilbert, Arizona, some sort of thing relating to that. But now we've moved away from it being a district identifier, but something that represents the Heritage District is what the intent of this is. So it would have to be someone that would have to spend a lot of money to not have advertising, so.
So if it can identify a location like Gilbert or Arizona, could it also, or does this, is it considered commercial if you put, for example, well, let's say you had a retail center that was called the district, could they put the district above there, or would that be considered commercial?
Commissioner Cavaney, I can have Chris Payne elaborate on this, but...
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner Cavaney, in that scenario, it would be considered commercial because it identifying the actual...
A commercial entity, yeah, yeah. Okay, that makes sense, okay. Okay, I guess that makes sense. So these will be very few and far between likely, then? Okay.
There's a maximum of three, right?
That's all that's allowed, okay.
That's all that's going to be allowed in this, so.
Okay, so this is very limited in scope. Perfect, thank you.
When the mayor hits the lottery, they're going to put a be kind up there, you know, something like that, because that's been a good thing for Gilbert, so. Commissioner Allen Brandy.
Thank you. Have there ever been any considerations for lines of sight to residential areas to protect them at all? Or is it just by nature of that alley up and down Gilbert Road that there are no residential neighborhoods that'll be impacted by getting a glaring red neon sign at night?
Commissioner Cavaney, so residents who have spoken opposition have mostly been concerned about how it's going to impact their residential neighborhood surrounding and also their views of the water tower. So there are residential areas within the Heritage District. There are provisions already existing within our zoning code doing with, that has to do with lighting that protects residential districts and illumination, but for additional things such as protecting the view of the water tower or visual impacts, we can only mitigate it in the sense that the location is along buildings fronting Gilbert Road here, so they're limited in scope that they're in one area, and there's only three, but not necessarily stopping it from a specific location that may impede someone. But this will be vetted through the redevelopment commission when it comes in as a sign package. So the redevelopment commission will have final approval and get to review this publicly when each individual sign comes in, so hopefully we can mitigate issues as they are proposed.
If I remember correctly, there was supposed to be some limits that had to be shut off at a certain time. Was that in there at all?
Commissioner Allen Brandy, that has to do in the Muni code, and I will have, I will put this towards Catherine Lobeer, what the specific provisions in the Muni code are regarding the certain times being shut off.
Thank you.
While Catherine's looking that up, are there any other questions or comments? Yes, Commissioner September.
So I'm also a little confused about a non-commercial sign and who would invest or pay for a sign to be put on the roof of a building. What, does staff have discretion over what the sign says? If it's commercial, I'm not worried about it being controversial or offensive. But if it's not commercial, now that opens up a whole array of possibilities for what a sign could say, and what discretion does staff have to approve those signs?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, Commissioner September. So since it is non-commercial, we do not have discretion over the specific content that's in there. So specific items, we cannot regulate how, what is specifically said in there. So it just, all we can do is regulate the non-commercial message, and that's just the limit of our regulation that we're allowed to have.
Catherine, have you come up with it yet?
Good evening, Commissioners, Catherine Lobeer, Principal Planner. So the Muni code does have provisions for light and glare, and the purpose is to prevent negative impacts to residential areas, and as you know, on our projects, we do the photometrics about spillover lighting. But the outdoor fixtures related to signage is actually not included, it's actually exempt from the, those provisions. So we don't have a requirement necessarily for them to be turned off at a certain time, but as Sydney pointed out, the sign provisions... But as Sidney pointed out, the sign provisions require that if you're within 50 feet of residential, we don't allow signs to be illuminated. So in this district, because the HVC, and they'll be oriented towards the roadway, we don't anticipate any spillover or impacts to adjacent residential.
I appreciate that. Does that help answer you, Commissioner September?
I have a question just with regard to consistency. A few months ago, a couple of months ago, we looked at another project, and I know we're talking about the Heritage District here, but we approved a project on the corner of a multifamily development on the corner of Ray Road and Higley, which also has a rooftop sign, correct? And to my knowledge, or to my thought, that advertises the product. I'm just wondering about consistency, right? I mean, are we being consistent as we look at one project versus another, or one development versus another?
Commissioner Smith, so the project that you're referencing is at the center, that's part of Agritopia and does have a proposed rooftop sign on their approved loft above a commercial center. And that is through an old ordinance for Agritopia that permitted them to modify sign requirements. So you know how we have our planned area developments today. My understanding of that specific piece is the specific ordinance allowed them to have the rooftop sign, and we honored that as it moved forward. So I believe this was originally approved in the 90s or 2000s with that, and they just have not erected a sign since that PAD was approved. So that was grandfathered in through an ordinance, and we no longer permit people to modify sign regulations in their planned area developments, but that is something that was from the past that slipped through. So you are correct, they are proposing a rooftop sign that I believe says Agritopia on there that is quite large. So that is a unique exception in the town.
Thank you. Mr. Smith.
I just have one question related to, are we talking when you say that the lighting must be directional as the photometrics will only shine forward, correct? Because I guess when we're saying it must be on Gilbert Road, but if it's above the building, are, will the sign allow, you know, if it's like light bulbs, it could go the other way. Will it have a back fascia that then must force the light to be directional towards the road?
Commissioner Monk, so they're permitted to have the sign perpendicular to Gilbert Road and have signage on both sides if they do do perpendicular. If they'd like to face Gilbert Road and be parallel with Gilbert Road, they are not permitted to have lighting on the other side, and it must be concealed, as you were kind of discussing. So they can have it on both sides if it's perpendicular, but if it is only along Gilbert Road parallel, they will have to conceal all of the elements behind the sign, and they are not permitted to have any type of lighting on that side facing residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Oh, Commissioner September, please.
Sorry to drag this meeting out a little further, but just to clarify, so it appears that staff would have some discretion over the, what the sign says, and that it would need to contribute to the visual identity and character of the Heritage District through extraordinary aesthetics, creativity, or innovation. So that's an element in which staff could guide the message.
Commissioner September, correct? So we have that in there to have some guiding principles for when it goes forward to the redevelopment commission for them to evaluate the sign. So they cannot change the content based off of that, but it's some parameters of what the sign should entail.
Thank you.
All right. Is there further discussion, or shall we have a motion?
Oh, yeah.
Oh. I am so sorry. Yes, I'm skipping out on all this. Thank you. All right, we have members of the public who would like to speak on this. Janet Aiken says she is opposed to this item but does not wish to speak. Neil Opit says he is opposed to this item but does not wish to speak. And Dan Woodsock says he is opposed. And while he does not wish to speak, he wants to allow his time for Doralee. And there's Doralese Machado, who is opposed and wishes to speak. So we'll invite Doralese up to take, we'll say, five minutes or less, and that's okay. You can take up to five.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Doralese Machado-Liddell, and I'm a Gilbert resident, and I live in the Heritage District along with living near Agritopia. I'm requesting that the text amendment not be supported for the following reasons. One, I just want to point out, the pictures that we see, we saw Seattle and we saw Portland. They do not allow rooftop signs. So it's kind of misleading when we see that. My other question is, we talk about cities that allow it. I don't know, and they have not said, which cities allow it. So that's just something I had to get out because it seems like as residents, like, were the forgotten ones. So the land code, the land development code and zoning laws are in place to protect the citizens of Gilbert. This text amendment will change the landscape of Gilbert. Once it's changed, there's no going back. Sign regulations protect all property owners, regardless to where they live or their economic status. The redevelopment commission passed this. However, during the meeting, the first meeting, they said that we're going to wait until the design guidelines were completed for the Heritage District. We had one meeting on January 31 of 2019, and that has been it. No design guidelines were shown, no meetings were conducted, no public input whatsoever at all. In this proposal, we have design guidelines that are in your packet. Those are old design guidelines, and those guidelines do not allow rooftop signs. So the process of public input has been limited. It appears that the council is fast-tracking these rooftop signs in Gilbert. Rooftop signs clutter the skyline. It's visual blight, and it takes the rights away from property owners to benefit a favored business. The business at 311, or 313 North Gilbert stated that the sign would read Gilbert. Does that make sense? Since the water tower that's 440 feet away is clearly marked Gilbert, and it's lit up. So why would someone want a sign to say Gilbert? Well, of course, if I want to be the first rooftop bar in Gilbert, I want to be the first rooftop sign in Gilbert. So there is a commercial purpose for this. It is a form of advertising. Come to my building, it's the one with the sign on it. So I disagree with, with the non-commercial versus commercial. The town attorney during the redevelopment commission, and I think he's here tonight, one of the questions was asked regarding non-commercial, as if they can advertise for, or could they advertise for another business or a political message? The town attorney stated that he would research it and come back to the commission. However, they passed it without that input. So tonight, here again, I don't know, maybe he has the information, but that might be one question to ask. Because I think supporting a text amendment without knowing what the outcomes are going to be is, is not good planning. Once the sign is approved, the owner can change the content of the sign. Because Reed versus the Town of Gilbert does not allow the, Gilbert or any other state to tell them what to put in their sign with regards to wording. So they can put anything. So once it is approved, it's approved. And he could put, or anybody could put, get your beer here. Bars rule. Or you fill in the blanks. Because no one will be able to tell that person what to say. You cannot do it. And that's on, in the sign code. The business owner, I understand, wants to contribute to Gilbert. That is great. What I recommend, and I suggest, that he sponsor a non-rooftop sign at each entrance to the district. Therefore, the town can control the content. The town has the ability to do that and not open a can of worms, again, regarding sign I'll go back to sign regulations that were passed August 15 in 2019, just recently. And in those regulations, they go through it, and they talk about aesthetics, right? They talk about historic character. In historic character, it says, "To emphasize a small-town historic character by promoting pedestrian-oriented and appropriately scaled signage in the Heritage Village Center zoning district." This was just adopted. This goes totally against what was just adopted. A 200-square-foot sign that is not even seen by pedestrians is not appropriate. It doesn't emphasize a small-town character. And historically, major cities and metropolitan areas have allowed, or did have it, but no longer allow it. And the reason why is to protect the citizens. Because rooftop clutter, we have to shield mechanical equipment because of the skyline. We cannot allow rooftop air conditioners. What is the difference? Clutter is clutter, whether it's a sign or not. And in this case, we are the residents, any resident. We will see that sign day and night. So you're looking at me like I have no time. So, is that true? Okay. So one of the other ones is property values. It does, it creates a nuisance. And what I believe, that the town is not being even-handed since it's not giving property rights to all residents of Gilbert to enjoy, living in an environment free of rooftop cluttering, enjoying the nighttime sky without a nuisance and excessive light. The town is introducing sign blight and visual blight in a designated slum and blighted area. I've said this before, Gilbert was known as a hay capital of the world. I do not want Gilbert to be known as a sign-clutter capital of the world. And I hope you support and don't support this amendment, and I hope that the questions are asked because we don't get any answers. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, I really do. They've been thought-provoking. Okay, we have Brad Smith. Brad's helped me with that. Any wishes to speak on this?
Good evening, Vice Chair and Commission. My name's Brad Smith, and apparently I am the fool who's willing to spend money to put a sign on top of my building. But let me tell you why. First of all, I do live in Agritopia neighborhood in Gilbert. All my children have graduated from high school here. Two of them work in historic downtown and own homes within eyesight of the water tower. And yes, I do own a three-story brick building located at 313 Gilbert Road, but I'm not a commercial developer. I'm a small-business owner. This building house is my software company, a local restaurant, a soon-to-open rooftop restaurant, and a co-working space for women. My business is not public-facing. We do business with other businesses throughout United States and Canada. So I have no need of any signage for my company. The desire to have a Gilbert sign just goes back to our love of historic small towns. My wife serves on the board of historic theaters, and we go tour those theaters that are mostly in small towns, and they've got beautiful signage outside. Most are commercial, for that matter, but that's where it stemmed from, from our love for that. Our town is always evolving in new ways to celebrate our growth. You know, I look at the four-story parking garage that actually limits the view from my daughter's house over the water tower, but I'm thankful that we have a four-story parking garage. That really helped with the parking problem we have downtown. Anything that brings recognition to our town, I'm in favor of. And I believe having the name of our town up in lights will continue making Gilbert a great destination. So as the building owner desiring the Gilbert signage, I support the amendment and the criteria and conditions set forth by the town regarding the addition of a rooftop sign. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Appreciate that. Okay, we have one last one, Sandra Reynolds, who is opposed and wishes to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners and Vice Chair. I appreciate your time tonight. It's getting really long, so I'll try to be really brief. There's a lot to say against these signs legally. It seems like this is an amendment to our rules that is specific for one person. I mean, this one person wants this sign, and to me, a council shouldn't approve something that's based on what one person wants for a whole community, especially when he doesn't live in this community. If this goes through, one of these 200-square-foot lit signs could be less than a block from my house, which would be very unfortunate. If the other ones go through, and there's one in each district, that means that from every angle of the Heritage District, these signs are going to compete with our beautiful water tower that was just used thousands of taxpayers' dollars to light and beautify our area. I think that these things should be kept into consideration when we approve signage for any area, but especially for our Heritage District. To take away from our iconic water tower, which is used in our advertising, which is what Gilbert is known for, with these signs is, it seems to me, very detrimental. Which comes to the point of three stories and above. Three stories and above seems like it would be counteractive to what advertising in the area is for, for pedestrians. The only people who are going to be seeing three stories and above are the residents. So I don't know if you ever drove down a road and tried to look up three, five, three to five stories and see a sign, and the way these stories, these signs are constructed, they're all steel construction. And all you're gonna see is a bunch of steel metal from foot, foot traffic. You're not gonna see the neon sign. They're made to read from a distance, not up close. And from a distance, the only thing you have is residents. So for that reason, they're a bad idea. Let me see, I wrote a whole bunch of notes. Oh, the gentleman who just spoke, I can't remember his name because I'm really nervous, but he was saying that they've visited a lot of places and seen these signs in a lot of small towns, and yet in all their presentations, I have not seen one picture of one of these signs in a small-town setting. So that would have even helped to see that this is really, it seems like they're just making this up, that I can't imagine these signs being in a small town. My biggest concern, actually, is what they call a stylized backer. They're saying that if these are facing Gilbert Road and are one-sided, that they're supposed to have a stylized backer hiding all this steel framing and mess that comes with these. What does that look like? Anyone know what a stylized backer looks like if it doesn't look like a big billboard? It's gotta be something solid if it's gonna conceal all this stuff. So am I gonna look out my window and see a big white board? I'm not sure what. So I don't think that this has been thought through on the fact of what is good for the Heritage District as a whole. It might be good for this guy to bring business to his community, to his building, which is why I think it's going through right now versus waiting for an overall concept. And so, because his is the only three-story or above building right now on there, I think it's opening it up to having historical buildings tear their buildings down to build them three stories so that they can advertise. And even though it's not a commercial message, putting a big light on top of your building is a beacon. It's an advertising in itself. It could be, it could say nothing, and it would still be a It could be, it could say nothing and it would still be a beacon for advertising. So I think my time's up, right?
Your time is up, yes.
I thank you for your time and I hope you consider that this isn't the right time for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate members of the public for coming out and giving your feedback and your observations. And this affects where you live and we, so we appreciate that. Sometimes we feel a little insulated. We all live in Gilbert, but different parts, so. Any further questions or discussions, questions for staff?
I just have a quick question. It was mentioned that there was no public hearing held. Is that true? Because I see that we have, that there was a public hearing.
Commissioner Simon, so she's referencing the design guidelines. And we have a representative from Economic Development here that's handling the update of the Heritage District Design Guidelines, who can provide some more insight into the project and what type of neighborhood meetings have been conducted. I don't know if Amanda Elliott's still here. But she was referencing the design guidelines, the redevelopment commission. When it was originally brought forth to them, April 17th, they recommended postponement of the proposed signage until the Heritage District Design Guidelines were updated in order to have more things, so.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Amanda Elliott. I oversee redevelopment for the town. The question at hand is related to the design guidelines. So Dora Lee says correct that we held one stakeholder group meeting in January for our design guidelines. As staff began the process of working through the design guidelines, we actually have switched directions and are going to a more visual set of design guidelines. Design guidelines are meant to provide inspiration for developers. Thusly, we have been working feverishly and fervently to complete all of the text that would be required for the imagery. And as of today, we met with a company to complete the imagery. So we have not had an opportunity to circle back with the public and will not be able to do so until all of the imagery is completed and ready to show them and provide, receive feedback.
Okay. Thank you. That's a fair question. Commissioner Al Brandi.
So I see two sides of this. First of all, from a marketing background, I like the marketing and branding aspect for Gilbert. I like that. So I don't think it's favoring one person over another. I think it's interesting and that's why so many people have been excited about the idea. And I do believe that the orientation, either perpendicular or parallel to the road, does in fact minimize light pollution. So I'm okay with that. However, the woman who came up earlier makes some very, very good points. Making an exception for the Heritage District is problematic. So the first question I would have of you, Cindy, is how do we ensure that there's no mission creep? That somebody does come back two years from now and say, you know, we have this other area that we're trying to develop in the northwest corner of Gilbert. We're trying to rehash it, you know, 25 years after it's past its prime and we want to do this again. There's another, so, you know, is this specific for the Heritage District? And how do we stop this from happening again? Because we say nevermore, this is a one-time, one-time-only deal. So that's the first question. And the point was well-made, that the stylized water tower is unique to Gilbert and in marketing, less is more. So I don't know if we need a lot of neon, as light pollution or not. And if they were design guidelines still to be approved, what's the rush? Shouldn't we wait and see how it hashes out before we approve something that goes to the Town Council in two weeks, three weeks? And yet, the design guidelines aren't written yet. So if I'm either misunderstanding, straighten me out. But at this point, I would want to wait. And I'm leaning, based on those comments, no.
Commissioner Al Brandi, so these signs right now, as proposed, are specific to the Heritage District in the Heritage Village Center zoning designation with these specific provisions. It could eventually be expanded to other areas of town if that is something that they pursue in a later text amendment, like our projecting signs. So our projecting signs right now in the downtown were specific to the downtown when they were originally proposed, the projecting neon signs that you see all through there. They were amended later to be permitted throughout all of the commercial districts in Gilbert. So we don't see them very often in other commercial districts and we've had a couple of applications come in, so they do have that right. So that is something that to keep in mind when going through, that this could be something that catches on later in other areas. So that is a possibility and we have seen it done with the projecting signs as the popularity of that grew. And then with your additional questions regarding the, I apologize with your second question. I'm sorry, I should have written that down.
Can it wait? I mean, what's the rush?
So Commissioner Al Brandi, so with the design guidelines, there are existing design guidelines in the code for it. There was discussion on, that was what the recommendation from the redevelopment commission was. They recommended postponement, so we did continue it. So it did not go to Planning Commission and assessed it with staff. So the design guidelines do have a to-be-determined date right now, based off the reasons Amanda talked about. But there are existing guidelines in there that have guided the other signage that has gone pretty well in the downtown. So we could wait for additional provisions, but we don't have specific provisions towards rooftop signs that we are not sure what specific elements we'd want to regulate even further through the design guidelines. So those were discussions that we had internally after that was recommended by the redevelopment commission. So right now, we do have our basic guidelines, but as Amanda talked about before, these are guiding principles for developers in order to urge them in the right direction for design elements, colors, and materials and those types of items. So we could wait for postponement of it, but then staff determine doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to have a completely different product. So it is a possibility that it could be postponed further. But that's the process that I went through with that after in April is recommended by the redevelopment commission to be postponed.
And please understand, I'm not trying to dismiss the work that's been done on this because this was a very popular idea. But, so what you're saying is that the new design guidelines that are under review right now will be silent to this. They're not even going to address the rooftop sign. Is that my understanding?
I'm going to have Amanda come speak on that.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Al Brandi, that is correct. The design guidelines are focused in four areas. So it's focused on our streets and how they interact with the buildings. It's focused on our open space. It is focused on the residential area. And it also applies to what type of character. But you are correct, that signage is not part of our design guidelines and it will not be part of that with update.
Right, so that's a moot point at that point. Waiting serves no purpose.
Commissioner Al Brandi, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good points, all. Any, Commissioner Brandt?
Yeah, I just want to understand, do we have the ability to provisionally approve this to where we have some control over the content? I understand that there's a certain legality to where it opens up a Pandora's Box and I understand the concerns of the public. You know, it would be very nice to be able to see a rendering of what this looks like and then have a sightline of what that's actually going to do prior to a blanket. And so I don't know if procedurally that's something, but I wanted to at least bring it up to where, do we have that ability?
Commissioner Munt, so it will not be brought forth to the Planning Commission, but our redevelopment commission that has purview over design applications in the downtown and some other elements will see this when it comes forward with an actual submittal. So it won't be approved administratively by staff. So the motion tonight just is for recommendation to the Town Council for changing of the code in order to permit an item like this to be submitted in a formal application. So when it is formally submitted, it will be routed to a public hearing with the redevelopment commission. So you will not see it, council will not, but the redevelopment commission will and they will have final purview approval. And at that time, we can assess the location, how it impedes the water tower and all of those items when we have a physical sign submitted in a location.
Okay.
Vice Chair, just to clarify, Commissioner Munt, when it does go to the redevelopment commission, they'll be looking at the things that Cindy talked about. They'll be looking at the design guidelines, but not the content. Not what the actual wording is, other than commercial versus non-commercial.
Okay. Commissioner Cavie?
So based on some of the comments, I was doing some research here and I see there are several cities that do allow these. But it looks like some of them, at least, at least one, maybe two that I read, and I was doing very cursory review here, allow them by conditional use permit. So I don't know if that's a way to kind of maintain a little extra level of control and ensuring that if something doesn't comply, it can be, the permit can be pulled and it comes down. I imagine we have enforcement too on code, but I did just another thought to throw out there that perhaps we could approve them via that method.
Cindy, when this went to the redevelopment commission, I really didn't expect that they would approve the idea of one sign, let alone three signs. So I was really surprised to see it come back as recommending approval to us, so, from that body. That being said, I've appreciated the discussion tonight, especially from our citizens who live there and who reside there and who have vested interest more so than we do. And so I'm seeing two sides to the coin here tonight and I'm not sure how to, I'm not sure how to vote on this, but I am leaning towards not approving recommendation to changing the code and leaving it as is. I mean, we all love Gilbert. I enjoy driving out through the Heritage District. It's vastly different than it was when my wife would walk down the street and when she was a little girl and go to the little store that's there now and has a nice restaurant in it and all of that stuff. So we have lived here a long time, my wife and I. And so to see downtown change, it's got its own vibe, it's got its own really cool stuff that goes on and it's bright and it's loud and it's fun. But I'm not sure that having a sign up on top is going to change all of that. We have Heritage District and the water tower and I'm inclined to think that that's probably sufficient and enough. But that's the way I would vote here tonight. And because I'm, I didn't close the public hearing, but I guess in effect I have. So I'm going to, I'm going to close the public hearing and make these comments and open it up to members of the diocese here if you have any discussion about which way you're going to vote and why. We'd love to hear it and then we'll have a motion and get on with this meeting.
Commissioner Al Brandi.
So Vice Chair, I want to emphasize your point. I was just going to make the comment that if you do nothing, is there harm? Don't think so. If we approve this and something goes up there that's light, well, it enhances, but it's not going to hurt the district. So I don't think we're creating an impediment by not doing it. I don't think we're being Luddites, but less is more. So maybe the water tower by itself, that is our focal cultural point for Gilbert. Congratulations to the speakers, you changed my mind.
So I do definitely appreciate the neighbors coming out and sharing their thoughts. However, I still think, though, that there is, downtown Gilbert Heritage District has become a very unique place and an exciting and interesting place. And it is because of the changes that have been made, bringing in the lights, bringing in the retail, bringing in the exciting environments. I never thought we'd have a whiskey row if their speakers blasted to the maximum either. But it's those changes that keep the life down there. So I think there's a building owner who's willing to put a sign up there that says Gilbert. We do have control over no commercial, so and I think that that's probably good. So I'm for it. I think it's a good thing.
Commissioner Cavie, I appreciate your point of view, but again, we have neon down there. We have a vibrant energy, there's a good vibe. I don't see the benefit of giving an exception with the risk of the future. Somebody's sitting here five years from now and say, hey, you did it over there, you did an exception. I want another text amendment and it gets ugly, so.
Hey, we're not approving an exception for the future, though. We're approving three signs, maximum.
Understood, but then we, Campbell's nose is under the tent.
It's always under the tent, though.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any discussion? Ready for a motion?
I actually have something I'd like to say. I actually am really kind of torn on this subject because I love the idea and I think that would bring a lot of character, more character than what we already have down there. Where I'm struggling is being able to control, truly control, what the signs say and what the signs say not only today, but in the future. And that's kind of my struggle. But I'm trying to decide whether that outweighs my vision of what this could look like and I think, I think that it's kind of a cool concept, so.
I can always bring it back. I can always bring it back, so.
And I just want to echo also that, you know, the feel of Gilbert and the demographic as we've grown from a couple thousand in 1980 to a quarter million now and understanding what the district means to the community and especially with being cognizant of the economic development of the area. I think it's, you know, it does stand to reason. However, I do also see the other side of, we already do have the water tower. I can't physically myself visualize what this looks like yet, which is where I'm having some struggles with it. I'd like to, you know, I really wish I could see that, but ultimately, I work right downtown there. My office is there. And I think the vibrant community is, is really exciting. So, you know, I don't, I still don't really know. It's going to be one of those like at the menu when I don't know until the last moment. But, you know, it definitely creates an interesting quandary.
Commissioner Smith, you look like you're pondering something.
I'm just trying to picture the three-story building south of the railroad tracks.
Yes, it's a new one, I believe. No, there isn't one?
Gentlemen, there isn't a three-story building south of the railroad tracks at this time.
Okay.
At this time.
New building could go up and they could have a sign, right?
Potentially, yes, they could. But right now, there isn't one south of the railroad tracks in that segment that you're discussing.
I'm wrestling with the whole issue myself. I'm sort of, like most of us are, I believe.
Good, all right, let's go with the motion.
So I'll move and if you're not for it, you'll say nay, and if you're for it, you'll say aye. Okay, here we go. So for the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the Town Council for Z19-04 LDC text amendment, heritage sign plans as requested.
Motion forwarded by Commissioner Cavie, any seconds for approval?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, okay, Commissioner Simon seconds the approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion is...
Can we get a poll on who voted aye?
Okay, if you raised, if you voted aye, raise your hand. Three to four. Motion did not pass. It's not recommended to the Town Council. There we go. Thank you, gentlemen, for your discussion and your thoughts. And thank you to the public for bringing it up and for coming out and letting your voice be heard. We appreciate that. Okay.
Vice Chair, can you sense that motion to recommend failed? Can you do a new motion to?
Sure.
That would not recommend approval of this item to the Town Council?
Do we have to?
Should be clear to the council that there is no recommendation. The recommendation is not approval. That the commission's recommendation is not approval.
We get to vote on this again, so. You can change your mind. Okay. Anybody want to forward a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a recommendation that the Planning Commission not approve Z19-04 LDC text amendment, heritage sign plans.
I'll second that.
Did you write, okay. Got a Love of Roberts Rules of Order. Let me try that one more time. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, for the reasons set forth in the staff report, move to not recommend approval to the Town Council of Z19-04 LDC text amendment, heritage sign plans as requested.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Close enough, okay.
Recommendation for non-recommendation, excuse me, motion for non-recommendation by Commissioner Al Brandi and seconded by Commissioner Munt. All in favor of this motion? All in favor of this motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Who were the, who were the nays, please? Cavie and Simon.
Cavie and Simon. Vote a nay. Okay. Motion passes that way, five to two. Thank you for keeping us straight.
I, cohort all. So, I, I would like to move for approval of the study session and regular meeting minutes of September 4th, 2019.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Cavie and seconded by Commissioner Smith. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I think only those who are in attendance can approve that, right?
Well, and it's actually the next one that only those...
Well, we had three new members who really couldn't vote on either one of these.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah, so if you weren't at these meetings, you don't, don't need to vote. And I also would move to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on September 17th.
Second.
Motion, or moved and seconded by Commissioner Alabrandi. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Those also got approved, and I wasn't there, so I didn't vote. I don't have anything to report tonight, but I was instructed by council member chair, or councilperson Peterson, to allow, you want all of us, so that we can introduce ourselves to each other, or just the new ones?
The new members, to give us their name, maybe their occupation, and...
Why you wanted to be here?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That'd be good. Yeah. And do you want to change your mind? It'll set another motion.
Okay, so, I'll just start, because I know it's getting very late. My name, that one's easy, Noah Munt. I'm an environmental engineer, and I work in downtown Gilbert here, and I wanted to be a part of it because I, just for the simple community give back, and to try to help and utilize my skills as, as much as I have at least, to give back to the community in the best way that I can.
Thank you.
My name is Scott September, and I am the National Zoning Manager for Crown Castle. They're a nationwide shared communication infrastructure provider. I've lived here in Gilbert for 15 years, and I've seen a lot of growth and development. And I've raised my sons here, they're older teenagers now, and I have a little more time and some, some time in my schedule, and I've always had a, kind of felt a civic responsibility, and so, that's what I want to do, was to contribute here in, kind of in alignment with what I do for a living, and participate in this way.
Simon.
So, my name's John Simon, and I own Foundation Insurance Services here in town. We specialize in commercial insurance, and I just love serving the community that I live in. I've been in Gilbert for approximately 15 years, give or take, and have been extremely involved in a number of different organizations through the Gilbert Chamber of Commerce, Gilbert Leadership, and other programs throughout the community, and I just wanted to take it a step further with my civic responsibilities in town.
Very good.
You know what TV is, right? Funny thing on the wall that you watch and take up extra time if you need to, so. All right, sorry about that. Smart aleck comments. Yeah, no, no. And I think Phil, Phil is a new alternate, he's been here for a year, but go ahead, Phil. Go right ahead.
Okay, I'm Phil Alabrande. Do high-tech sales in the semiconductor capital equipment business, which is the machines that make chips. Seventeen-year Gilbert resident, two kids have gone to school here and graduated from high school here. Finished my first stint as a alternate just last week, and I'm happy to be an alternate for the next year as well and be the designated relief pitcher when required.
Okay. Dang, I should have made you chairman tonight, that'd be good. Nathan Mackin, is he not here anymore? He left? Okay. He is, he owns several Taco Bells, and that's his expertise and experience, and I'm glad to be here, so. All right. Yep, that deals with that, so, report from Planning Services Manager, Ava.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I would just like to welcome all our new members and thank all the commissioners for your service to the town. It's really greatly appreciated. I'd also like to let everybody know that the draft of the general plan will go live on October 7th. It'll be up on our internet, and it will be available in hard copy at various locations around town, and that'll be, start the 60-day review for the public and for other agencies. So, we'll send you a link to all of that once it goes live on Monday.
Thank you. We'll look forward to reading that next week. Okay. And I would, I would recommend that we all take a chance to review through that and become familiar with it. Reading every word and every page may not be necessary, but, you know, becoming familiar with it, because that's, that's kind of our code and our bible that we deal with here, so it'd be good for us to be aware of it. Thank you all, and adjourn the meeting.